All set? Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. We're one member short here this evening so far. I don't know if it'll be in later. If anyone's recording, would they make it known? Thank you. First, in preliminary business, we have the minutes of February 25th. Which the three of us were there. If you had a chance to review them? Any changes? Care to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of February 25th as presented.
Good with that, Mike? Is that a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
For the 11th?
Yeah.
Second. Oh, did you make a motion?
I did not.
Oh, sorry. No changes.
You all set with the 11th too, Mike?
I'm staying out of here.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the minutes for March 11th as presented.
My second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is an approval not required plan for 2416 Cranberry Highway LLC.
My name is Robert Perry and I represent the applicant. I'm going to ask you to throw away the plan that I gave with the filing. I mean, my own changes. Basically, the only thing that I changed is the name of the trustee. The original plan had, no, Mr. Angus, president, deceased, and Nancy Angus is the successor. The other thing I changed is originally in the plan I gave the engineers had labeled lots, Propose Lot 1, 2, and 3. Simply changed to say Lots 1, 2, and 3. They're presently 1, 2, 3, and 4 on Assistant Sheet 108. Now, what we're talking about is the Maxi gas station up on Cranberry Highway. And about the same time I filed this, I filed a application for site plan review before the Board of Appeals since there are special permits required. And that's on for next month. What we're looking to do here is divide the overall property into three lots. And on one of the lots, the intent is to build a brand-new facility, a brand-new gas station and convenience store. So, any questions or see any problems? Certainly.
Are you creating any dimensional non-conformities with the subdivision?
The proposed easement. Does that have to provide access to Lot 3?
Yes. Well, it's not the access. It would be the access for utilities. The access is over on Toll Road. The frontage is on Toll Road. The easement is simply for utilities should it be necessary to bring them in from Cranberry
So, we are to consider the frontage of Lot 2 as being 188 feet?
Well, the proposed frontage is 209 feet. I don't think the easement subtracts from that, so...
What is the 123.6? Oh, I'm sorry, there's another one down here. Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions?
They've got frontage and they've got access. And they've all got more than required frontage in area. They were good-sized lots. We've got quite a large parcel of land there.
Was the new gas station going to be Bob on Lot 1?
Yes, it is. Basically, the new building will sit right where the Maxi gas building is, except toward the back, toward the back of the Maxi gas building. It's very similar to what you have at Newland Farms there. In fact, it's going to be built by the same people. Well, I hope it's going to be built by the same people. I may be some presumptuous there. It's a pretty good project. I expect it'll be approved.
Any questions, Charlie?
Yeah, just one on Lot 3. Looking at Section 15 and out of the six density and dimensional regulations. If I'm reading that correctly, I think the only buildable portion of Lot 3 which would comply with that section would be the half which is to the west. Directly behind Lot 1, the lot has maximum dimensions 125 feet wide. So, in that area requires 150 feet. So, you couldn't fit a 150-foot diameter circle in that first half. You clearly can in the second half, but not the first half.
On the, to the west?
Right.
I agree. I don't disagree with that.
So, it would be the west half, or I'll call it the northwestly half of that lot would comply with that, but the portion that's closest to Toll Road would not.
Which, Charlie, shouldn't make any difference, right?
Except that I believe that the way I would interpret that is that within the building area of the lot, you have to be able to put that circle in.
Which is the westerly side.
So, you put the westerly side.
Yeah.
It's not a non-conforming lot. It is, except that the building can't sit...
I understand. No, I agree with you. I agree with you completely on that. Building has to sit to the westerly end of the lot. Not that we even have a building planned on there yet, but ultimately, if it is, the front would be parking area and associated areas, and the back is where the building
Did you bring a Mylar?
I have the Mylar, yes. I had the Mylar when I filed it with you, but I looked at it and saw I had to make a couple of changes, so I didn't give it to you again. I apologize for that. I know you like to have them ahead of time.
Monumentation to actually establish...
What do these lots are?
Nothing shown on the plan. The only two I see are on the opposite side of the highway. Two or three.
Charlie, I can't answer that question.
Because they've shown nothing on Toll Road, nothing on any of the three lots at
Charlie, excuse me. What was your question? I didn't hear it.
I was wondering how they actually established the lots themselves, seeing as how there are no monuments shown on any of the property here. Toll Road was laid out as a public road. It's got monumentation on it. I can't speak directly for the area to the northwest, but I believe there is monumentation that separates the property out from Great Hill. If there was any that they found, it would be nice to note it. It is tied to the monumentation that's on the other side of Cranberry Highway, but nothing on the lots themselves. It's not a reason for denying the plan necessarily. It's just that it'd be nice to see it.
Probably has that one. I see it, the appeals board, the 24th of... You can keep that, everyone, Charlie.
That's all right.
Yeah, give it back to me. I'm looking at the old one. So, I got the Mylar here. Sign it, I can get a copy made.
I make a motion to endorse the plan.
Thank you. A second. Any discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much, Dan. Good night, you.
Good night.
Can George sign a print?
Yes, please.
Next is a gender is approval not required plan for seat of...
Yeah, they asked to postpone.
And for the next item too. Next up, approval not required for AD Makepeace Company, Charlotte Furnish Road.
I'll take a small one.
Master Millworks here. That's right. This one there. Yeah, they may have also shown... All yours.
All mine. I'm Bill Madden here on behalf of AD Makepeace. What we're presenting with tonight is a Form A plan for a lot, 1002C. We took that from a larger piece of land owned by Makepeace and created a single lot that's compliant with zoning. It's in the R60 zoning district, and this lot has 180 feet of frontage, which is required, and 4.17 acres, which is in excess of the 60,000 square feet that's required. Other than that, it's just a simple, single lot Form A plan.
There wasn't a road on that side? There was two lot, two roads cut across there at one time on that frontage.
Two roads cut across the... Well, I think those are the previous lots. It might have been divided on each side of that 10-acre, 14-acre remaining piece. Are you saying that 14-acre piece was divided?
I thought it was on the 14-acre myself because Master Millworks was... There was one on that side of it, and I thought there was one on the end of that parcel at one time.
I think there might be some easements on that plan for access, but not defined lines of ownership on the 14-acre parcel.
So, we're only looking at Lot 1, 1002C?
Yes, and D also, actually. I mean, D was, C was taken from the larger tract. C and D comprise the original tract, and C is being created. D is remaining.
And what is the land to the east?
To the east, that's part of a solar site, an existing solar site.
Look at my son through the back.
Take a motion to endorse the plan submitted.
Second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? The public hearing that was posted for Zero Broad Street is, the posting is wrong. That's set for April 8th. We have a continued public hearing for special permit site plan review for Wayham Retail Management, 1 Sett Toby Road.
Lindsey Wilson, I'm counsel for the applicant developer, Alrig USA. Here with me are my colleagues Doug Hartnett with High Point Engineering, the civil engineers for the project, and Sean Kelly's back from the NASS associates regarding traffic as We had taken the feedback that we got from our initial hearing and were able to make some modifications in response to the comments that you all gave us. We did get Charlie's peer review, but only fairly recently, so to some degree, we're still digesting that, though there's aspects certainly that we can talk about. And then want to, I guess, solicit additional feedback now that you've had a chance to hear from Charlie, so that we can then respond and hopefully come up with final plan revisions at what would be the next meeting. So, from there, maybe Doug, you can kind of address the plan that we had presented at our last hearing and then kind of where we went with the plan changes in response to the board's comments and feedback.
Thank you, Lindsey. Doug Hartnett, High Point Engineering. So, Derek Redgate, one of our managers, was here at the last hearing. Derek's traveling, so I'm batting for Derek this evening.
They look alike.
Thank you. So, the plan that you see on the right-hand side is the plan that was basis for the original filing. Three buildings totaling 16,200 square feet. The center building is, references the Aspen Dental Building, which is the current focus of our client, Alrig, and the Wayham Retail Development LLC. The other two buildings on the left and the right are retail pads. Final tenancy occupancy to be determined based upon marketing of those particular buildings. Obviously, the development plan incorporates all three buildings with the parking, the access, and so forth. I assume everybody has their orientation okay from the last meeting and the presentation to not reorient, but the main Walmart access driveway is to the left of the drawing. That's the boulevarded section that you see. It's in grayscale. And then the primary site access is your initial right-hand turn through the existing parking field that has shared provisions for shared parking between Walmart and Wayham Retail Development LLC, and then the three development parcels with that circulation extending toward the, what we're calling to be the secondary access egress driveway, back out onto Route 28. So, there was a number of comments, questions. Charlie obviously provided some initially prior to his review letter. We've been through the review letter, and we've started to make some changes in advance, understanding there's some things that we could start to check off on the list.
So, first and foremost, it has to do with the site circulation...
I think you can stay as long as you kind of speak loudly.
We're okay. Talking in here, okay.
We had last time. That way.
So, there's some discussions about concerns about the in and out circulation coming to the site driveway on the main access drive for Walmart, and also for relocating dumpster sites, loading areas for this building here. Right now, this plan proposed you have the circulation be one-way in only, not to exit out of this driveway here, but to have one-way in and one-way in until you get into the main two-way circulation, the two buildings here, with the exit point being here. There were some concerns, and I think if we're discussing some of the traffic items further on in the presentation, about trying to limit trips out into the intersection. There's some concerns Charlie raised about accident data and so forth, the functionality of the intersection. We think there'll be an opportunity to be able to put wayfinding signage, directional signage within the site itself for people that are exiting here to, at least those that are coming to Route 28 South, to direct them out into this area, try to take a little more pressure off that intersection. And for those people that are leaving that are not fully 28 north or otherwise going up Sett Toby Road, to basically try to funnel them out through sign up to Route 28. There was another item reason about parking and why the parking count, I think it was 123 was the parking count on the project proposal. The reason we had the parking was two reasons. First of all, we had the square footage because the programming was a little less than what you had seen back then. I think it was 2016, 2015, on previous proposals, 162 versus a higher number than it proposed at the time. But also, it allowed us flexibility for future tenancy of this building and this building here. But again, the Aspen Dental is somewhat fixed in terms of 3,600 square feet. This building was 7,200 square feet. This building was 5,400 square feet. 7,200 square foot building could be leased or tenanted as a, say, a restaurant, national or local restaurant. So, seating of a restaurant of that type could be the order of $250. And so, in order to be able to accomplish parking requirements, not just on the zoning, but also for the restaurant operators that typically want more parking in their lease agreements, that's why we had increased the parking count through here. It doesn't have to be built initially under the first phase, which in this case would be focusing on the Aspen Dental, and we could look to bank the parking in here so that ultimately, when that tenancy is established by the building, while the approval for the parking is there, we could bank it and not build it until we know for sure that this individual requires the parking.
So, as designed, we're eliminating initial development of 26 parking spaces.
Yes, under this scenario, while we would design the stormwater management system to accommodate it and so forth, this parking would not absolutely, would not be built under this scenario until we know what this kind of would be. The orientation of the buildings, there was some discussion about what this would look from the roadway, and so we had our architect do a couple of perspectives to get a little better sense on how it would look perspective-wise, both from, you know, obviously aerial from the intersection of Sett Toby and 28. And you can see, here's the bend in the roadway. This is the access roadway in the back. This is the Aspen Dental pad. This is the future 5,400 square foot pad. This is the future 7,200 square foot pad with the surface parking in the middle and through. Obviously, this would be modified with final discussions about adjustments to circulation and parking and so forth, but I think it gives you an understanding on the massive of the development, its character, and how it fits into the area. And in fact, that many storefronts on 28 and Sett Toby Road makes sense, given the circulation and the amount of volume and activity that's up in front of that site.
And just to speak to the orientation, because I know that that had been a comment, the orientation of the buildings facing towards the roads, from our tenant or our client's perspective, is really a non-starter. Visibility for a retail tenant is the whole ballgame. In particular, our anchor kickoff tenant of Aspen Dental will only do this project if they have the orientation out to the roadway. So, orientation in particular, as well as within reason, having the site circulation, having both the initial ingress and then the egress out towards the secondary versus the central one-point only is a major issue for our client as well. We're hoping that by making one-way in the two entrances closest to Sett Toby, that that'll address some of the board's concerns and really be pushing the traffic to flow out towards that secondary exit.
Thank you, Lindsey. This just gives you a little better perspective of the Aspen Dental. Again, this has been our focus from client perspective, and this gives you a sense of architecturally how Aspen Dental would look from the, it's kind of in the corner, if you will, for Sett Toby and 28. And I know there's some concern about the rear of the building, as Lindsey was alluded to before. Again, you see Aspen Dental here. This is what the backs of the building would be against an architectural massing model at this point, but we have opportunities to dress this up through a few architectural elements, facade treatments, signage, and so forth, so that people don't feel lost. They go down the driveway to find where they're going for those different buildings. There were some discussions, I understand as well, regarding sight lighting and the concern about the pole lights being, and this is a tough drawing to review, but there was some discussion about light poles that were originally proposed at 30-foot in height and having a little too much illumination out there. So, what we did is we had a landscape architect, Mike Bradner, take another look at this, talk to his sight lighting consultant, vendor, if you will, and had reduced the light poles 25 feet and have eliminated the pole here to take advantage of the existing lighting that illuminates the access driveway. So, we get some light spill for these poles indirectly onto the site that help provide illumination there, so we get reduction in light pole count, production in light pole height, and still provide adequate illumination for the project as it stands here.
And we had also committed in our initial hearing to using lights that can be dimmed for off-hours as well.
As it relates to, so these are the big things... As it relates to, so these are the big items, and Lindsay, hopefully if I missed anything, at least the initial discussions on the circulation plan, the one ways, the goal of funneling traffic through signage and other means to get most of the traffic that will be taking through 28 South to get the number of secondary driveway to take pressure off the, of the exit movements back out onto the main driveway on the Seftobie. I will say that appreciate Charles getting this to us Friday and not this afternoon, because we've been known to happen in other towns I work in.
Many times, yes.
So thank you for that. It's given us an opportunity to look at it. At least from a stormwater perspective, I'm confident we'll be able to work with him to meet all the requirements, all the recommendations that were suggested there, all the detailing notes that you had suggested that we look into. Confident we'll be able to address those. Lighting we talked about. And then we get into probably the two items that are maybe most important from a planning perspective. And as Lindsay had alluded to, the orientation of the buildings as they front on Route 28 and Seftobie Road and the desire for our client to obviously have those storefronts be on the main roadways as a traditional for retail design. And then also some of the traffic concerns that were raised in Charles' letter.
Sean, anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I can, again, we just got, thanks again, Charles, for getting us the letter on Friday. We have, in their case, to put together a detailed response, again, to record your shot cut with the analysis. But I think, you know, going through the comments, I think it distills down to really three primary concerns that were raised. The first deals with growth in traffic in the area independent of the project, where Charlie did point out that there are a number of other projects in the area that are either under construction, planned, or moving forward. And just to be clear, when we do our study, you know, we consult the town, we identify projects that are in the pipeline, we take into account the traffic associated with those projects. So our analyses in terms of the future conditions includes the traffic that Wareham Crossing was generating when we did our traffic house. It includes the traffic associated with the buildings that were being constructed that weren't yet generated traffic, so that traffic's been included. It also includes the traffic associated with Wendy's. So everything in all the Wareham Marketplace is incorporated into our analysis. It hasn't been before your board yet, but as I think you got a little bit of preview tonight, there's also a plan to upgrade the gas station on the opposite corner and do a larger convenience store gas station project. We had also incorporated the traffic associated with that project and the improvements that they're proposing as part of our future traffic study. Really, the only development that wasn't on the radar that we don't have, that Charlie did point out, was the Linger Store located on Toby Room. I was over there tonight for quite a bit of time looking at it. It really isn't a major generator. I mean, it does have some traffic, but given that it's retail and given that you have so much density of retail area, typically, some of that traffic can be passed by people that are already in the area. And even beyond that, we do a, we do apply a growth rate to look at increases independent of any specific project. So we're confident that that 1% growth over seven years, I'm sure that the gas station does a 7% increase on Toby Road. So we're confident that everything that's in the pipeline has been accounted for in our assessment. There was another comment raised about the fact that we compared the traffic associated with the prior project, which was $18,500 retail, with the current project. And again, we weren't doing that in a way to say, this will pass, we simply wanted to let the board, inform the board that this was a project that went through state review with MEPO, with DOT, and with your local boards, and this is where the traffic was, and here's the new project and it's less traffic. Certainly, all our analyses reflect what's proposed today. We simply wanted to point out the fact that, you know, the Walmart came in, it was a larger project, both in terms of size as well as traffic impact. The last issue, again, really boils down to the driveway on Toby Room, trying to make this driveway as safe as possible, trying to minimize the number of exiting movements. I think Doug did a good job walking through some of the onsite modifications that are proposed to try to funnel some of the new traffic and even hopefully some of the existing Walmart traffic over to the 28 driveway. Again, I, you know, as I was over there again tonight looking at it, you know, this driveway really was intended, you know, in terms of 28 traffic to allow for traffic that wants to go north to access the signal. It was always envisioned that this driveway would serve a significant portion of the traffic heading southbound. Today, because of the convenience, because of the lack of opposing traffic from Wareham Marketplace, a lot of the traffic that comes out of this driveway, you know, comes up and makes a quick right-hand turn, you know, the goal obviously is to funnel that traffic to Route 28 over to this driveway, which is probably a safer, more convenient egress point to get to 28 directly. And then lastly, you know, we did hear the concerns raised by the board about safety at this location. Charlie has pointed out the crash history there, and we're going to work with DOT and try to identify some additional measures that we can implement to improve safety in general in this section of Toby Room. Really, like I said, again, we will have more detailed response, and we'll be had a chance to really go through the concret detail. That's what I have to learn. Thank you.
Just one comment. I wasn't trying to criticize necessarily the comparison between the previous project that was approved with Walmart and the traffic generated by this site as a part of that as compared to what this is today. My comment was that some of the construction that's out there today was not there when the original Walmart proposal was presented and when their traffic study was done. So to simply compare one to the other without taking into consideration the projects that were approved in between doesn't really give you the picture. That's all I was saying. So I wasn't trying to be sarcastic about your comparison, only that in my view, it isn't a one-to-one comparison because the situation of the entire area has changed in between those two times, that's all.
But we completely agree. And again, we have taken into account everything else that's going on, so including, you know, the gas station would be more constant and more convenient store across the street.
Northbound, to get from your site to 28 Northbound, what are your choices? How do you park a lot?
The only, to get from this site to 28 Northbound, you have to either come up through this driveway here or make a left to get to the signal, or the driveway further down on Toby Road.
No, I mean, off of your site itself, how do you get to the Walmart parking lot? You know, northbound.
I think you're saying, if you want to get northbound, you would have to come, I mean, this is one way, just so you need to come through the site.
Or by, yeah, right there.
You can come down that way. It's a circuitous route.
Sure. Seems a little cumbersome.
But that's the intent, is to try to direct the traffic flow out to the other exit.
I mean, the reality is that the bulk of the traffic that comes to this establishment, we expect is going to come from the south on 28, either the 195 interchange or 70 points south on 28. So we expect that much of the traffic should be coming out this way and then even coming in this way. But right now, you know, the patterns that have been established since Walmart, it really is that anything, whether you're going north or south on 28, is coming out of this driveway. I believe they didn't want to report there were less than, honestly, it was less than 10 cars an hour of traffic coming out of this driveway versus, you know, well over 150 coming out of that driveway. So the imbalance today is pretty significantly different.
Do you have a count as to how many go north and how many south?
We can, I mean, in terms of the driveway itself, what, I mean, we have to make some assumptions once they get to this area as to how many of them came from Walmart. But I can tell you that from watching it during peak hours, I would say most of the traffic that comes out of this driveway, I would have to imply 70% of it comes out, comes to the signal, makes a right, and shoots down 28 southbound. So the bulk of it is heading back towards the interchange. Certainly, you would expect the tenancy would potentially have the same patterns as that.
All right. I want to make sure I understand correctly. When you're calculating the number of trips in and out of the location, are you taking into account that this 7,200 square foot facility could potentially be a restaurant, as you mentioned? Or are you not including anything for that building at the moment?
When we run the generation for these two buildings, we use, it's a lane called 320, which is shopping center. It's a, it basically covers anything that includes a mix of retail restaurant and office space. And it's typically what you utilize when you don't have tenants that are going to do that. It certainly, if down the road they came in and said, this is going to be McDonald's, then we have to take a closer look at it because those were extremely appropriate. But when we're looking at just general retail space that doesn't have, that doesn't need a tenant, 320's a lane that's called a computerized, and it's a mix.
So obviously, we couldn't do McDonald's or similar without coming back to you for a drive-through, so.
So you're still doing the 180 entrance?
We tried to, basically, sort of last of all the conflicts that were occurring in this general area, we, you know, we want to maintain this trial, and we do understand that vehicles coming out of here making a left, vehicles coming in making the right, plus the potential for vacuuming, was a lot different than what it was. So to address that, we've made this one-way inbound, so now there won't be any exiting movements here. We designate these spaces as employee parking. That way, these spaces don't have high turnover to reduce the conflict. So now the only maneuver that you should have here really is that inbound turn, which definitely makes it worse.
What size turning radius does this allow for?
In terms of vehicle?
It was a 25-foot minimum on the interior curb radius.
What is, is it the requirement for a fire?
Well, we had done a fire apparatus study initially, it was in the original filing, when that was two-way. And the fire apparatus turn worked at that point in time, but we'll just supplement that and make sure that the board has the right information with the one-way in only.
I, okay, I don't, it seems to be not longer than, not bigger than 45 feet. And it's my understanding, or I could be mistaken, that a fire, a large fire apparatus would require more than that.
Interior radius for a fire turn is 45 feet's about right, you know, because you would use that same type of criteria for, say, a semi-tractor trailer. In this case, fire apparatus are fixed, they're not, they don't have a tractor and a trailer that allows a little more maneuvering. But what we'll do is, like I said, we'll just reconfirm that with the adjusted plan.
And also, unless there was some exigency, this would be a possible route for the fire as well.
Yep.
And if there is a large pickup truck parked on the, the.
Employee parking.
Employee parking, that potentially would limit the ability of the fire truck to turn. I don't mean to be pestering you about that, but I just think it's too tight.
Well, I think it's hard to see it on the plan. It is already in keeping with code, but we'll confirm that it works for.
Check what happens.
Fire circulation as well.
Somebody doesn't park properly in this, in one of these bays. They've blocked a fire truck.
We'll study that. We'll have an answer for you at the next hearing.
For your own benefit.
Oh, no, I understand that. No, I'm absolutely correct.
Did you get the note from fire department regarding the radius?
Is that recent, since last hearing?
March 20th?
I did not see that.
No. To whom was it addressed?
Well, it was. John, you want to describe?
Came to the planning boards. That inside corner there, how do you, you've got kind of a wide-open intersection there. How do you handle that?
The inside corner of the.
The outside corner of the Walmart parking lot, that.
The center of it, or?
No, in the, right there.
Right here.
It looks like a wide-open intersection there.
This intersection was intended to have through movement one-way, but still a lot of circulation to utilize this parking lot. Again, Walmart still controls that overflow parking for them.
But on your site that looks wide open, is there going to be some sort of?
This is 24 feet. Again, the original proposal, this was a two-way. So by proposing this to be one-way here and one-way in here, we would still maintain the 24-foot width. I guess that's what you.
But isn't it wide open to this parking lot for the?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yes. So you have, so here's the spine of that, and that's the spine of that, if I'm presenting that correctly.
Let's see, that could be a little antsy.
If you, if the turning radius became a problem, would you not move the building over to the north?
This building here?
Yes.
We might be able to do that.
Flip your.
Yeah. We might be able to pull these spaces and bring them down in gear, if that makes sense for the project, if we do it, if we're designing it that way.
I'm sorry, but I think that that 180 turn is just too tight. It makes it uncomfortable for the shopper.
So you had said that's a 25-foot, right?
It was 25 on the inside, but the overall.
Right. So the fire comment was to make sure that the turning radius was 25 feet, which it actually already is, but certainly we can accommodate if it needs to be adjusted. I think.
The overall radius is 45 feet, so it's 45 curb to curb.
Yeah. Which is approximately probably this room or larger, right, in width?
Did you look at his letter? I was, I don't know if they were talking about the existing radius or yours.
This, I do know this letter, and I was Derek, and I spoke about it right before the left. We had made this radius, we're going to make this radius 25, what he was talking about, increase 25 foot inside turn radius to the two attached entrances, as he requested. We thought he was talking about this radius here, but if we bring the radius at 25, what it does is it starts compounding itself because it's getting 45, not 50. If it was a 50-foot radius, 25, 25, then it'd be a completely rounded item, if you follow me? So in this case, if he wants 25 foot, this is a total 45 foot. This is to your point, do we slide this five feet if we can't show you any apprehension? What we do is we go talk to the fire department, show them the turn, so he shows we could make this turn, and if we can't, we're going to have to obviously accommodate that.
So we have a chance to advertise a dentist's office. I don't quite understand the, I look at it then as a destination location. I don't look at it as an impulse stop, let's go get my teeth cleaned.
I mean, Pacific Dental, Aspen Dental, a couple of these companies that have franchised have, I guess, kind of created a new hybrid model, which, you're right, if it's your dentist and you become loyal to them, then you wouldn't care and you'd go where they are. This is kind of a hybrid model that wants to pick up, having people think of bringing their business to them as part of their retail chain routine, et cetera, similar to the significant growth in medical clinics, the Minute Clinic and other things that you're seeing, 24-hour med that are growing and becoming a retail use. I do a lot of leasing work, and actually, it's something that we've had to address with a lot of declarations of restrictive covenants and things so that we build in what are becoming more common uses, or mixed use even, if you will. So this is becoming a retail component.
This is the same type of thing, you know, super cuts in a mall, just shop around with pants together.
Part of your, part of your experience, yeah, exactly. I know in the last three years that either dental or medical retail, if you will, has come, Kingsbury Plaza on Route 3, Colony Place in Plymouth on Route 44, you know, they're rapidly expanding, and this is part of their model. And they're a good tenant, too, because they aren't a parking pig, if you will, and they're not like a McDonald's or something that's going to be churning traffic. It is destination, but they require the visibility.
Good question on the traffic. You're representing this project.
Correct.
You represented Walmart?
Correct.
You represented.
I'm sorry, Bob. So you're representing this project, you're representing Walmart, you're representing the Aldi's owners?
We represented Walmart and Wareham Marketplace, meaning with the permitting efforts, correct.
Are you going to represent Wendy's? Are you talking to those?
We already have. They've received their approvals.
And did you, you said you represent Wareham Crossing as well?
We were not involved with Wareham Crossing, though.
So I'm curious, other than what the developers are bringing to the table, have you made any proactive suggestions on how to improve this whole traffic flow together other than signage? I just don't know what, why didn't the intersection make sense to me? I know that happened very early on with the Walmart, the whole reconstruction thing. So you're thinking with these five lanes, because this is a very clear picture to me here.
What?
With these six lanes, actually, that converge here.
Can I just get your, hold on.
Yeah.
We have no shortage of boards for you. We have no shortage of boards for you.
He can't find the one he wants.
I don't have the, you know, this is wrong. So if the five lanes, you're speaking, three lanes southbound and two lanes traveling northbound?
Yeah, the whole convergence of turning into Toby Road now, from both directions. And now to add Wendy's in there with the entrance point where Autozone is.
Right.
You're okay with that, that whole interaction?
That was, that was actually designed, to be frank, when, when Walmart came in, you know, there was a, there was a big push to fix this intersection. Uh, this intersection, again, a line you probably would hear for, if you know the background book. But this intersection was unsafe, had a very high crash rate, the poor alignments. Um, if you, if you recall, the, the islands were not in the proper location. If you drove up 28 North by the way, you were sure ready to make a left. If you pulled the island, if you left the island, it, it was, it was a disaster. Um, number of, so an operational standpoint didn't work, a safety standpoint didn't work. And basically, you know, Walmart had come in and said, we'd like to upgrade this location, do some widening on Toby Road to give additional storage. One of the concerns was that, you know, Toby Road was only a one-way approach, so you didn't have that storage to accommodate both the left turn movements and the right turn movements. The queue had gone back, you know, too far down the corridor to walk. So it was widening down a two-lane approach here. What ultimately came out of the process was that, you know, Walmart could fix it to the extent that it worked for them. They made it better, but they couldn't do the full fix without working with the Beetons, who own the property on the corner where Wareham Marketplace is. They needed to get some of the Beetons' land to push Toby Road to the south, so that it would align with Tobruk, because additionally, Toby Road came in somewhere, you know, up in this area, say.
Yeah.
So it didn't, it didn't work. It was a straight car, you know, using zigzag moves to get across the corridor. When that was all put in, and again, you know, our firm was representing Walmart. Jacobs was hired, they were representing landlord of Quorn Beetons, town traffic engineer. They had WSP Cel, I believe, out of New York was reviewing it. And Mast D O T was reviewing it, because it was an interface with their traffic signals. So there were four, four sets of eyes looking at this, including two that have jurisdiction. You have the towns, boards, with their period consultant, D O T. And it was determined that this was the, the optimal solution, because the idea was maximize the amount of storage on Toby Road, and then ensure that cars coming in on Toby Road didn't block traffic getting into, continuing through. So the Beetons wanted a left turn lane, to ensure the traffic coming into Wareham Marketplace had a lane to store their vehicles before making a left. Walmart wanted exclusive right turn lanes, that their traffic would have its own lane, and the through lane would continue through. So that's really the genesis of that approach. Why there were five lanes up there is that if you didn't have a lane, a left turn lane, to get into Wareham Marketplace, every time a vehicle wanted to make a right-hand, a left-hand turn into Wareham Marketplace, they'd block traffic on Toby Road, and it would back up into Route 28, and D O T wasn't going to have that. That they need to have a left turn lane. Walmart wanted a right turn lane to get traffic in their side. So, so there was a function of need for each of these lanes. I know when you look at it now, from, from the bird's eye view, you say, well, we have five lanes out there, but, but it was done within intent, and it was done with, with four, four different traffic engineering groups reviewing it. And this was the deal, the optimal plan that would accommodate the needs of this project, the needs of Walmart, the old parcels, and then also give the, really the most flexibility in terms of how to operate the intersection geometrics and operations to be as safe and efficient as possible. So that's, that's how we got to where we are with that mix.
You know, but this is just, just simple me.
Sure.
Simple me driving that road four times a day, man. Right, probably I've got more miles on Toby Road than old Ford to buy. From, from the time you take a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn off the Cranberry Highway onto Toby Road, you've got about 400 feet. That's the Autozone pouring in to your left, the Walmart pouring into your right, another entrance at Aldi's, and now we just put a liquor store there, and then you've got another Walmart exit, and then you have a JCPenney exit. There's not enough distance. And now, and, and again, I'm just, just brainstorming with you all. I'm saying, this is all brilliant planning that you have. I'm just having a hard time with, you have more invested in traffic study. And I don't see a, any solution to the onslaught of traffic that's about to happen from this, and then the presentation right before you. If, if they develop MaxiGas, and they keep the same curb cuts there, what, what are those, you know, you know what happens there? I'm going to explain what just happens. The Mobile Mart, right, in East Wareham, the Mobile, that this was just reconstructed at the entrance of the old stop and ch, oh, where the old Walmart was?
Right.
People don't know what to do there. People actually take a sharp left to head down to the Cape with only 50 foot to a stoplight, right? Or they're cutting across, we're creating that whole circumstance of that stop and shop merger here.
Well, if I can take a step back, and I don't want to cut you off, but just to be clear, and I don't want to get a preview, because I know we've been out before you tonight. Well, one of the, one of the things that we've recommended as part of the redevelopment, that gas station at the corner, and just so we have a consult on that as well, is that access on 28 gets cleaned up. So the, the movements you see today, and I've been out there, you see them, people whip in, get gas, they, they pull up, make left-hand turns, you know, 10 feet forward from the stop bar. That condition will not be there after post-development condition. The only movements that we're recommending on 28 are right and right-out movements. If you want to make a left on 28 from that redeveloped gas station, recur via Tow Road, via a signal, and upgrade to Tow Road. So I, I do hear that concern, but I just don't want your forecast situation that certainly will not take place. D O T's not going to let them build a big convenience store there and have full access drivers on 28. It's not going to happen. So, so what, what your concerns, well-founded, absolutely, but just be clear, it's not going to materialize in the real world.
My feelings on the D O T, they're not the most brilliant people, the decision-makers. Because they allowed a curb cut onto the Bourne Bridge to remain there when it was converted from an IHOP to a Dunkin' Donuts. You can't convince me that they're going to eliminate curb cuts. They're going to go to some antiquated law that goes back 200 years that says, we're not changing the footprint of the property. What I'm really struggling with right now is a conflict of interest. I, I don't see, where, where you're representing all property owners on that entire intersection, I don't see any suggestion to the town here, and what we need to look at from all these developers on how to improve this circumstance. We, we can't go back and unline this. Once you develop this piece of property, and once we move forward with Walmart, if there needs to be major changes to that intersection to accommodate all this increased money that's flowing in and out of there, the town's going to be held, holding the bag, to make those changes to that road system. So I, I want to make sure that, and again, you, you have more vested in, in the traffic than anyone else in this room right now, is that you can say with, of an honest opinion, if those are at a high-velocity occupancy, if that turns into a restaurant, or that turns into a bar, that this intersection can handle all of this movement. Because I don't believe, it's just a distance calculation in my mind. Those five lanes, narrowed it down to two lanes, the increase on the Cranberry Highway, the open porous action of MaxiGas, the, the high-volume traffic that's coming through a Wendy's. And we're only talking about signs in the parking lot right now, this, I'm just playing, again, you misunderstand me, I'm just...
I, I, I understood, let me, let me just weigh in, though. I, I am counsel to the proponent, so I'm the advocate. The reason why we picked Sean to be the traffic consultant on this and the others is because his role is data. He has the stockpile of the traffic data that builds on itself as developments have arisen, et cetera. So he's not drawing conclusions or trying to persuade. I guess, to some degree, if anyone's trying to persuade, that would be under my role. All he is doing is saying, here is the trip calculation. And he's basing it on all of the data that he's assembled throughout these projects, and based on the industry standards that say X number of cars are generated from this type of use, et cetera. So I guess, to some degree, in fairness to Sean, he's only providing information. Well, it, ultimately, it's the board's job to make a conclusion. It's my job to advocate whether or not it's appropriate. So, and then just the only other thing that I wanted to at least provide as perspective, because some people weren't here in the, in the first meeting, and I know you have to look at it in the aggregate. But this is a proposal for just this development. So if, if you can at least refresh us on the average daily trip generation, peak hour, et cetera, just so we have an understanding of what we're talking about as far as how many cars is this development going to be putting on these roads? And to some degree, how that interrelates with the others, so.
Right, so we're, again, we're, I know we're here for all three, but we break it down for the shopping center trips, the medical office, which is the Delta, or Aspen Dental, rather, and then the past five trips that are already out there. So when you look at the shopping center trips, you look at the, you look at the evening and the midday, these are your busiest hours. It's all based on I T E data, we look at the medical office, we end up with past five, these cars are already on 28 or Toby Road. And what we have is that in the evening, we're looking at about, about 20 cars coming in, about 30 cars going out. So it's, it's under a car per minute. Saturday midday, boat 30, and about 25, about 55 boats. So we're talking about one, one car per minute, and they're all coming from the same direction. Now, both of them will come from the interchange, but there will be some that comes from Toby Road via Main Street. There will be some that comes from the north. So when you break it up into three different directions, you're talking about far less than one vehicle per minute. And you actually look at it, it's really the entering car every other minute, and the exiting car every other minute. So that's the type of level of increase we're talking about here, you know, at an intersection that accommodates, you know, into the thousands of vehicles per hour.
So what, what months is that data from?
There, there is no months. Um, the I T E data is based on counts that are done at operational facilities. They go to facilities throughout the United States and say, this is the, this is the size of this facility. They do counts on a daily basis with brokerage, they do counts during peak hours, they look at the generation during the busiest hours. And then they create a database that says, you know, we have all these medical office buildings, and 10,000 of them generate this many trips, 20,000 of them generate this many trips. And they create a rate that tells you that if you build a medical office building that is 3,700 square feet, you can expect that building will do this much on a daily basis, this much on a Saturday, this much during peak hours. So the counts are done throughout the year. You could have a count done in January, you could have a count done in February. This is the, this is a national database.
I know, but...
Even if I do want to use this data, I have to use this data, because it's, it's required by D O T, it's required by me, but your own town's consultant would tell me I don't need it.
So here again, is my argument, is that
Sure.
This is a community that swells on a two-time multiplier in summer.
Yep, understood.
Anything that's represented right now in March is going to be double than July in this community. This, this would be like constructing something in Boston in the middle of summer, and not taking into account every kid that goes to school there throughout a regular college semester. And the population that is static at 100% in summer months moves to 1.8 million
Understood.
in, in the school. So I, this is the brilliance of the D O T, again, there has to be a mobile model calculation.
The D O T requirement, just so we're aware, is that you have to look at average month conditions. It's not peak month conditions, it's, it's average month. So you look at the months of the year, you look at what the, what the traffic volumes are, and as long as you're above the average condition, that's their criteria, that's state, that's a me and a D O T guideline. We've got our counts in October, which were above average month condition. Um, so they were above average. We, we met the requirement of the state when we actually began it, we didn't adjust downward, we kept them where they were. So, um, you know, we, we understand seasonal variation for sure, but it's important to say that the state requirement is average month, and we've looked at it above average month.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just have to, I, I don't know how this gets handled, is that there, there's too many unknown factors here that impact this traffic flow right now. The, the occupants of these two future slabs on this project, the unanswered Wendy's flow, there's four empty structures in, in, in the Wareham Marketplace right now. And, you know, a potential for the redevelopment of MaxiGas. How do we get fed back, or get, get the opportunity, once this reaches complete saturation, to come back to these business owners and say, this is unacceptable, we can't, we can't, the town cannot take this burden of a $5 million reconstruction project?
Again, if I expected to just say again, Mr. Chairman, and again, maybe it didn't come across clearly, but when, when we do this study, just to be clear, we go up and we take counts, we count how much traffic's out there today. Then we project the traffic that all those other developments have, are going to bring online. So our analysis, there's no...
Right, this, this analysis even includes the Wendy's count.
It includes Wendy's.
Right.
It includes the MaxiGas station being redeveloped. It includes all the buildings, you know, we have, I think it's a mattress store coming online anywhere. We've included the shopping center traffic. We actually even went out and did the counts at Wareham Marketplace for the operational components of it, which are the Aldi and the Autozone. We compared them to the trip generation that we had actually outlined, please, when they went to the permitting effort. And it was significantly lower than projected. So even when we projected for traffic from this project, it's actually coming in less than that. So, you know, we take into account everything that we have to. I'll even tell you this question. When we did Wareham Marketplace, we were still taking into account the traffic for the 18,500 retail that was initially proposed here. So once, once a project is in the pipeline, it is our requirement to include the traffic associated with that. And we've done it, it's been done at, at, for each of these, there isn't a project, the only thing that came online that hasn't, as I pointed out, was the liquor store. And again, you know, when you have a project that small, we, we take a background growth rate. So in addition to all the traffic that we actually individually programmed in, we just say, hey, if, if the volume in the main line is 500 cars an hour, we assume there's a growth in that every year for seven years, independent of any project, just to account for little things like a liquor store that might open up that may influence traffic in the area, but not at a significant level. So all, all of these things have been taken into account. And when the state, when we have to apply for an access permit for Mast D O T, and we will have to apply for one, their traffic engineers are going to look at all this information. They're not, they're not operating that back here, they know Wareham process, they're reviewing the access permit for that as it is. They know the gas station's coming online, we had a meeting with them, they're reviewing. So they're not, it's not as though they, they're not conscious of all these things that are happening here, and aren't going to review all of our work to make sure all of these projects have been taken into account, that we've accounted for the traffic increase, we've accounted for the mitigation that we're proposing, and that that's been taken into account, and we've done all that. Because this isn't, all the things you're asking for, if you read this report, are they?
Your concerns, though, obviously, when you live in a town, you're the one who's affected and experienced that. And I sit on boards in my town, and I've been in your shoes. From our perspective, all we can do is say, for this scale development, this is what we feel is the most that we can do to mitigate, and that we feel that it's, it's more than consistent with what's already been permitted at this site. We've actually fairly significantly reduced it, we've improved the traffic flow by, by proposing some one-ways, et cetera. So we think that you're actually going to have a, a project built here that's been contemplated since Walmart from day one, that'll have a lower impact than had they built it two years ago or five years ago.
You brought up the other corner, and I think one of the observations we made when we were writing a recommendation to G B A was that it was overbuilt. And to me...
I don't know which, I'm sorry, which corner?
The other corner, is that Marketplace? That's your Marketplace, yeah.
Of the, there's some...
The Beetons property.
Yes.
I don't think it's fair to take that out on this site, you know? The, uh... So far, I think we just need some tweaking here and there. I think we're, in my mind, I think we're on the right path. One, one observation, and I'm not asking you to do this, I'm just to take a look at it, would be if you slid this project down toward the, the other driveway a little bit. Like, I believe the original plan for this site had, you were closer to the, to the northerly...
Up the hill more?
Up toward the point, you know, the, the exit driveway. Would that free up any circulation on the other end of the site?
We pull this, this way.
Yeah.
Pull that north. I'd have to go back and review what the original proposals were, those 2015, 2016. We do know that this, this is somewhat locked in, this position, in terms of, for their current lease agreements with the tenant.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I know that's obviously the board's purview, but, um, I don't know if this is necessarily going to negatively impact or really result with a significant negative impact without really looking at this one more time. Maybe creating some room here, and I pull this over to address some concern, what this gentleman had here.
Can I?
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Question for your, for your reaction.
Yeah, sure.
If you took this building and brought it over here, now you've been the parking on this side, you eliminate this much asphalt, because you can use this. So now you have given the fire truck or whatever, largely, a more of a chance to come in here, because like that parking here, your traffic, parking, everything, just a little block. I think that would do a lot, that, I mean, to your point, too, Julie, just moves everything away from there.
Well, the reason we have done the parking on this side is this, we're looking at this corner as kind of being a hot corner for the building, in the event that they wanted to do something in the corner with a tenant that would, you know, some tenants want that corner presence versus storefront presence. But we'll explore that. I mean, the, the concern is, ultimately, can I get a fire apparatus in here comfortably in effect? And we will absolutely explore that, and with the benefit of the letter. You may end up finding that this building shifts, whether this parking would flip, that's something I would have to...
But in the rendering also, I think that the massing of the three buildings, it would improve if this were moved closer to the other two.
Okay.
So I, I, I would suggest looking at that, please.
We will.
And again, I'm not asking you to redesign it, just to take a look at it and see if it helps you.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman? That's exactly what I asked him to do.
That's exactly what I asked him to do.
[laughing]
When I looked at the overall design of the site, and if, if you look at the picture, there's a substantial amount of pavement that's right up against Cranberry Highway. One of the things that we look at in, in terms of the site as a whole is visibility and what you're looking at. Uh, I can appreciate what Aspen Dental's concern is. They want visibility. Uh, and just looking at the plans that were presented before, three out of the four sides of that building have Aspen Dental written on it in pretty good-sized letters. So the fact that, uh, things face on Cranberry Highway, um, it seems to me a little bit counterproductive for the following reasons, and I put this into my, my report to you, is that when you're coming south on Cranberry Highway from the north, and if you happen to bypass or go by the site and you look over to the right, you see Aspen Dental, there's no way you can get there from there, as they say. You have to make the turn onto Toby Road. You have to make the turn into the entrance and make another turn to get into the site. And once you get to make that last turn, you're looking the back of every building. In my mind, it doesn't make any sense to have the back of the building facing that portion of the project that you approach it from. That by moving those buildings forward and flipping the bulk of that parking over into the inside, now you create the, the area that you need for the parking where you get them right to the front door easier. You eliminate some of the, the visual impact of pavement against Cranberry Highway. And you also, because we know that this is, this picture right here for Aspen Dental is, is simply a generic plan, and it doesn't show the orientation of that, that they could certainly apply their logo to whatever they want.
This, this board, yeah. This board shows the...
Your conceptual drawings.
Yeah, yeah. The conceptual drawings do not reflect that. So when, when you look at this, it, it just seems like, um, you could gain a lot by pulling those buildings forward. Uh, the visibility for Aspen Dental would, would improve. You could increase the density of the landscaping, which would make it a more visual appearing thing from Cranberry Highway. And since you have to get into the property from Toby Road anyway, you'll be approaching each of the buildings where they have a storefront. And it's much easier to pick out where the front door is than to have to make a circuitous travelway through all of the various twists and turns of this parking layout.
I mean, we, we hear you and we respect your opinion, but this is a, this is a planning and design comment. And we take our direction from the industry, and there's a reason that every plaza that is of a similar nature is outward facing. It's because this is what the industry wants and requires as part of their leasing deals. They, there is no tenant by doing it the other way. So therefore, this is the design that makes this a feasible project, and to require it to be internal facing is essentially to kill the project.
I, I respectfully disagree with that, but I'll let it go. Uh, I made the comment. With respect to the traffic report, just one other comment if I could. Um, the report itself acknowledged that at the Marketplace-Walmart intersection, there were 17 reported collisions within the five-year review period. Then it goes on to state that the rate of crashes exceeds the average annual crash rate for unsignalized intersections in this Mass D O T district. So my question is, if that's the case, does that trigger an additional review of that intersection to see if somehow that intersection can be improved somewhat to reduce the potential for the, a number of crashes that have taken place?
Yeah, I, I think, I suspect that you're, what we were involved with earlier last week might spur the question. The crash rate did definitely is above the state average. Um, the majority of the crashes at this location are the angle type. I think what you're asking is that, is it a qualified H sub location? Would it require a road safety audit similar to what we're doing currently?
No, I'm not, I'm not asking that because that study that I happened to sit on last week involved that whole region, or that whole area of all those intersections. Your, your traffic study pinpointed that one intersection and said that the crashes at that intersection were above the average for the, for that district.
It is above the average, correct, but it, but...
So given that, doesn't it, doesn't it make sense that perhaps there should be a little bit more interest in that and trying to reduce that so that the potential for crashes that potentially could be even at a greater percentage once this new development gets built?
Absolutely. And we're in complete agreement. Again, as I said, we are going to work with the D O T and talk with them, look at some potential measures we may be able to implement. Um, we've only had the letter of day. I haven't even had a chance to get, get someone on the phone to discuss it, but we will be looking at it. But the, the fact that, I mean, because it has a high crash rate, we certainly need to get a closer look at it. But I want to be clear that there's, there's the average crash rate, but then there's also another D O T designation, which is your Highway Safety Improvement Program Cluster, which is where they identify a location that requires further evaluation. The meeting we're at this week is because the Kendrick Road intersection is one of those locations, an H sub cluster. This location is not. Um, it, it isn't designated on their website as an H sub. So it is, it is apples and oranges, you know, it wouldn't necessitate the full details thing that we're doing here. But, but I agree. But that it's above average, we should look at it closer. And we, and we will get back to it the next meeting. I, I expect with some potential measures we can implement there to make things safer.
I, I would assume that MassDOT wouldn't look at that because it's not within the highway system. It's within a town way.
But it impacts on it, right.
So they're going to look at all the access, directing and direct. The fact that we have Bud State Highway requires that, if, if we didn't even have a driveway on 28, we have a driveway just on Toby Road, we would still need an access permit from D O T because we have Bud State Highway. Uh, the proximity of this driveway to the signal was something they reviewed in great detail in Walmart with the permitting and also Marketplace. So, so they certainly, the, the fact that it's not a D O T road at this location, they're not going to just ignore it. It has a, it certainly has an interface and works in conjunction with the signal at Cranberry Highway. So they will be taking a look at it. Uh, but if I, but we do, we do understand there's a concern here, and we need to come up with some...
How far away is that study by Mass D O T and the curb cut permit?
We, we cannot file for the access permit until we have a local approval. So we don't have, we haven't even filed for the D O T permit yet. D O T issued an access permit for the 18,500 from Walmart on 28, but that permit's lapsed. So we have to apply for a new permit, which essentially, you know, is, is going to identify, you know, that the, the project is similar to what they approved, but a smaller project.
Okay. At, at the time that they approved that permit, you didn't have the record of the 17 crashes. Now you do. Would they be looking at it from a different perspective now that they have that data?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to speak for what D O T does and doesn't do, but they certainly do the exhaustive review and then like the traffic and safety. So I expect that anything, anything involving this driveway with the operations, queuing, safety, crashes through, all those things will be reviewed by D O T. I would expect this part of our file.
And the intersection you're referring to is the Walmart parking lot and Toby Road and...
Uh, yes, it's the, it's the...
I'll identify it, so what do you want me to talk about?
Can we put up the last photo?
This one?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you, so the sign, Cranberry Highway, this is Walmart there. See the sign, you know, blue term up there?
Right here, yep.
Push that thing north to the, the next entrance road in there. You brought that sign up there directing people. So in that direction, you put a turning lane into that entrance up there.
There is one.
A turning left lane?
Yes.
Yeah, you can turn in.
Yes.
It's a dedicated arrow left.
You can turn in there.
There's a lane.
The trucks go over the island and they knock the trees down all the time.
There's a, there's a...
[laughing]
And that's something that, again, I think because of the fact that all the traffic today that comes to this site, and when I say this site, I'm speaking of the Walmart site plus our site, it's all traveling to this portion. So if you're coming this way, I mean, I, I understand that it's, it's a, if you go on Walmart, it's easier. I, I would suspect the public people go to Walmart on a regular basis, don't even know you can make that left. I, I think you didn't know that either. So I, I think ultimately, when this, when this gets remedied, that's why I think the idea is...
Starts to actually get into use, yeah.
People will realize, if I'm going to Aspen Dental, I don't need to come in and drive into Walmart and do all this. I can simply continue through. There's a left turn lane there for me so I can store myself safely in Route 28 and wait for a gap and put in that direct way. But that, that lane is always, I'm not sure if it shows up in, but, uh, yeah, it does.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, so that, that lane is, that lane was built when Walmart was developed, and the idea was that this was going to be the, kind of the release valve to, to let traffic come in and out here. It simply isn't today. It's not, this, this driveway is not being used. It, it's all funneling over here. But again, I, you know, the, the combination of increased signage on site, one-way directional signage, and also the fact that it, it simply isn't going to be as easy. You know, when Wendy's is operational, Wendy's is putting traffic out of this intersection, people are going to realize, you know, I, I can't just make the left anymore whenever I want to, or not necessarily whenever I want to, but as easily as I want to because there's other traffic coming out of the opposing driveway that's looking for those same gaps I am. It's easier for me, even leaving Walmart, to simply come out here, make the right-hand turn, and go that. So, so I guess the bottom line is that, you know, the, the geometry of this intersection was built to, to be a release valve and serves as secondary access and egress point.
Underutilized.
But today, it's just not being used that much, but we expect it will.
Is, is this pathology of the sign placed in?
I, I think if there was a sign in this area that identified the tenants, it might help, yeah.
Yeah, because I, you know, even, I just only can measure my own performance. If I'm going to stop and shop in this Wareham, that sign is at the entrance point. You know, I think that sign directs people to where this is. I mean, right now, that sign being dead center of the property is, is just drawing your attention to that Walmart sitting 2,000 feet back right now. So if you, if that sign was repositioned... Well, we don't have control over the existing pylon because that's Walmart's. As far as our own signage that would come online, that's something we certainly can talk about, location. The existing sign is, is Walmart's sign.
Back when that, when Walmart and this site were approved the first time, it was to be a look back on the traffic situation with possible mitigation.
Every year, five years.
And this site would participate in that mitigation?
The, the idea was that every, every year, and, and this is one thing we weren't involved in, so I can't speak to the study they did, but the idea was that every year Walmart, and they made, it wasn't just committed to this town, they made it to the state as part of the NIBA filings and the D O T approvals, that every year following their, their art certificate, they would go out and do counts for an entire week, put troops across the driveways, count daily traffic for a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, get peak hour traffic, write a report, summarize to the state that shows, here's what we projected, here's what we saw, here's the distribution of traffic, here's what was projected, here's what we saw, here's the operations, and then make recommendations. Again, we weren't involved in that, but that commitment was made. And as part of our report, we requested that when they do their next round iteration of the setting, that, you know, they specifically count this development independent of Walmart so they can provide a comparison of all pieces. So you're right, there is a commitment to do it. Um, and I believe one has been done, but I don't believe this has been the others at this time.
Two have been done, actually.
Okay.
And we, uh, in my office filed a letter to the state and to the consultant asking for additional information because it wasn't clear that the impact was being clearly stated in the report, in the monitoring report. I have not heard back yet.
George, one other question if I could on that parking. Um, how does your proposal to make a portion of the Walmart parking lot access one-way impact their operation?
A portion of Walmart's parking lot?
In front of that third building, I thought I heard that you were proposing to make that one-way in.
This was one-way in. This was, I think this is still going to be two-way. Here's one-way.
That's two-way?
And this is one-way. And that was still staying two-way. So it's one way to bring you in here. Uh, I don't believe we would have the control to modify that.
No, we don't have, we have, we have the right to have our tenant's park there, but we don't have directional control over it. No.
Yeah, I'd certainly want to see how that would work. You're going to have conflicting things right at a...
I mean, at least historically, there's virtually no use of those spaces. Obviously, with our development, there's a higher possibility of that. So one thing we were talking about is, you know, the inner relationship between, um, the parking spaces that would be on that backside of the buildings and pedestrian traffic. Um, so that's something that we're looking at and want to make sure is, uh, both safe and, and, uh, well-designed.
That's my parameter. If this guy's parked out there, I don't go to Walmart.
[laughing] There would have to be a thousand cars there, so...
They don't have to get that far to stop him from going.
Um...
Would that affect their ability to park RVs there? I noticed that after the last one.
They do park there.
This was not, this was not designed to be an RV parking lot, but you're right. They have taken to do that.
Walmart had a national policy that would allow people to park their RVs in the parking lot overnight.
Well, they're not striped, at least for RVs, but...
They don't do that much, though, there.
Yeah.
Just on a very limited occasion.
So with your permission, if, if we could, we will, uh, further digest Charlie's comments and recommendations, um, and then, uh, contact Ken to talk about, uh, further changes that we'd come back to the board with, and then hopefully come back in two weeks, um, with kind of our best and final for your consideration.
The, I did look at, after the comments on the parking lot lighting, I did notice the Walmart lights are quite tall.
I, I drove in there the other night, uh, just because I had made the comment, and I wanted to see what the lighting at night looked like.
Yeah.
And I think they have, they've found what actually takes place because that secondary access road has quite a bit of spillover into this site, and there's a little tiny bit of it over on the, I'll call it the southwest of the left-hand side of the property. The rest of it is dark. But their agreement to reduce the height from 30 to 25 is a move in the right direction, and using the existing, um, intensity of lighting off the existing Walmart poles is certainly helpful.
Great. Well, we appreciate, you know, this is a lot of your time we've taken up, and we appreciate it and your comments, and we'll see you, uh...
And I think your previous illustration of looking out from Walmart, I think Aspen Dental knows to identi- how to identify your property from most angles. Anyway, any further direction you wish to elaborate on? Look for a motion to continue to... Go ahead. I won't be here April 8th, more likely.
I will be in England, but I will have a colleague covered for me.
Well, if you're not, maybe we should continue it so you get a full board.
I hope we can. We could continue to England if you want.
[laughing] I, I think we take the 8th. Um, you know, if, if someone else is going to not be here, and it's going to be a problem, then, you know, we can always continue further from there. But hopefully we'll be in a position to, uh, to present and get a vote.
I'm not a holding member, but I wouldn't be here either on the 8th.
Let's keep the date, at least for now. And if it doesn't make sense, then you can always continue further, so.
Sounds good.
Move to continue the meeting, the hearing to, uh, April 8th?
Yeah.
Discussion. Hello, favor?
Hi.
Close. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Been a long time.
What's that, Bob?
Mike?
You talking to me?
Not me.
Is that Mike or D Mike? Okay, is that better? I think I was sitting back, Bob.
It was too quiet when we were speaking.
We learned at the, uh, seminar at the, um, Citizen Planner Training Collaborative that you can attend the meeting even though you're in England.
Yeah.
So you can attend by remote.
If you want to go to England.
Yes, the town has, uh, adopted a remote attendance, uh, policy. Uh, let's see. We have a bond release discussion for Beaver Path.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Bechant, um, representing myself. And, uh, trying to get the bond released because everything's been done for a lot of years. Uh, I maintain the retention basis because I still own the land there. So the Homeowners Association set up, everything, Charlie looked at everything, everything's done. Time to give me my money. Been 50... So you can attend by remote.
If you want to go to England.
Yes, the town has adopted a remote attendance policy. Ah, let's see. We have a bond release discussion for Beaver Path.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Bechant, representing myself, and trying to get the bond released because everything's been done for a lot of years. I maintain the retention basin because I still own the land there. So, the Homeowners Association set up, everything, Charlie looked at everything, everything's done. Time to give me my money. Been 15 years.
The Homeowners Association is set up?
Been set up, recorded, funded, everything.
Because that was not the indication we got last meeting.
Been done for years.
We have HOA documents?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I, you know what? I bet I even have the recording information in this. That's been done for years.
Of course, make a liar out of me. I'm pretty sure...
From any attempts by both regular mail, certified mail, as well as canvassing the neighborhood, had no luck getting the residents of Beaver Path to respond to me regard to the Beaver Path Homeowners Association that has been set up and funded by me.
Is the recording information in the association? It's been submitted before. Yeah, basically, I'm the one doing everything, so it's been 15 years, it's time for me to get my money back. I still own Cranberry Bog and all the other land. The retention basin's on and I've been maintaining it, and that was the whole thing behind it.
I believe Ken sought some information from council regarding this, so I guess we'll have to wait for him to come back in and give us a report.
Because all the conditions of the subdivision have been met, every single one of them. So, it's time for me to get my money.
Are you total of six structures on this road? Six homes?
Yes. There's not six on it now, one of the lots is still vacant. I don't own it, someone else, someone else does.
So none of these six homeowners are responding to you?
What are you asking, what are you, we're not...
Just wanted to be part of the association because I've funded the, I've funded the Homeowners Association, there's money there, and basically I'm the only one doing anything, but no one cares to do anything. No one will respond, and there's nothing I can do. I talked to my attorney, and he's like, what are you going to do, sue him?
Does the, does the HOA have an annual meeting?
Yeah, I have it. It's funded.
Proxies are requested and received.
The only thing the HOA is supposed to do is take care of retention basin that I own, so I maintain it.
Just an update, when this was constructed, there was no reference to the Homeowners Association on the deeds. So the buyers have nothing on their deed that says they belong to a Homeowners Association. This particular document, you set it up as a trust, correct?
Yes.
Not as a...
That's what the attorney told me to do, and he did it, and that's what's recorded.
We'll have to wait for Ken to come back and tell us.
What, what was the gentleman required to do in order for the bond to be released?
Everything, the, the conditions for the subdivision have all been met. Charlie went down and inspected everything, and it says I had to set up a Homeowners Association, and all the other conditions were met. Everything's been signed off.
My memory is sometimes not what it used to be, but it seems to me there were a couple of post-lamps that were missing. I don't know if they're there on each lot or not.
They, they were, every single post-lamp was there, but then one of the neighbors took it out. I spent $150 on it, he ripped it out of the ground, I don't know what he did with it. It's not, it's just, it's beyond ridiculous now, it's not my problem anymore, it's all done, it's done correctly. Time for me to get my money back. It's been 15 years. I came back, actually another contractor was supposed to finish the subdivision, and he didn't, and I came back, spent thousands and thousands of dollars finishing everything so I could get, in fact, get my money back, so.
So forming the owners' assoc-, the Homeowners Association was part of his obligation?
It was a part of the approval process, that's right. Typically, when that happens, the Homeowners Association gets set up first, and then when you convey a lot, it's conveyed along with the percentage of ownership into the association. That didn't happen when the deeds were conveyed for the lots that were sold out. The Homeowners Association came on afterwards so that nobody who's living there has any legal tie to the Homeowners Association, the way I understand it.
Well, technically, two people do. Two of the deeds that went out are, but they won't respond either, so it really doesn't matter.
I have no idea.
There's a total of, one of them's duplex, and then there's five other homes. One, two, three, four other homes, sorry.
But, but how many ownerships and fee?
There, there normally would have been six, but two people are signed on. Well, two people have it in their deeds, the other people don't, because it wasn't discovered that this wasn't done before until it was too late. But the Homeowners Association was set up, and it's part of the subdivision, you know, it says it has to be set up. Part of the approval for them to have their house.
I don't have a good answer for you. I think it's up to Town Council to, to guide the board as to how to book forward.
And technically, it says I have to set it up, nowhere in the, in the, in the, what do you call, approval process, doesn't say it has to be in the deed either. Technically, it doesn't say that. It says it has to be set up.
The understanding is that it is, that's, that's the reason you have it, and it's why it's called a Homeowners Association. You set one up and then not have anybody be a part of it, doesn't make an awful lot of sense.
And it's also made just for the retention basin, that's what it says, and I own it, and I've been maintaining it all these years.
Well, I think it's set up for the construction, or the maintenance, rather, of the drainage system, which includes the pipe, the catch basins, whatever's in the street, as well as that basin. So, the Homeowners Association, if you were to convey your property out and someone else owned it, then they would have to assume the responsibility for the upkeep of that drainage system, as well as the homeowners. That was the whole intent of that, I'm sure. So, I don't have any real recommendation, I think it's up to the Town Council to, to guide the board as to how to take care of the situation. Clearly, it didn't get done when it was supposed to get done, and that's probably the issue, but I don't have a, I don't have a recommendation for you.
Do you hold the property the drainage system is on? So, will the Homeowners Association have to pay you a lease on that property?
No, it's got an easement on it.
Did you get any information from council regarding Beaver Path?
No, I did not.
Excuse me?
Didn't respond to you or didn't have anything to say about it?
Didn't respond.
Well, I think we need some, I think we need an opinion so we can put this to bed. You encountered anything like, like this in your...
No, this is a first.
I was looking to see if there was succession in here, but I don't see that.
The best thing we can do, George, is put it on the table till we hear something from council. Exactly, that condition was from day one, you know, we're going to start circumventing the system and changing the rules as we go. I don't think it's fair to the...
Yeah, and I didn't have to come back and finish the subdivision either, and I saved the town by coming back.
That's why the money's there.
Yeah, and therefore I should get it since I spent thousands of dollars to come back and finish it, that I did not have to do. Is this, we all know, someone else was supposed to finish the subdivision, not me, and I did this in another subdivision in town as well. You know, this is my town too, but it's time to give me my money back.
What is the amount of the bond?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
What is the amount of the bond?
It's like, got to be, it's around 30 grand. It's a lot of money, and it's mine.
And when you say that you, just for history, please, that you've tried to reach the neighbors by regular mail certified, what, what were you trying to convey to them?
Just for them to become part of the association, because eventually, it doesn't make any sense for them not to apply to get the road as a town-accepted road. No one's ever done it, makes no sense whatsoever. And I've tried to talk to them and say, look, this is what subdivisions do. You privately develop them, then everyone petitions the town to accept the road. You have to do that. In order to do that, you have to meet the subdivision regulations. The lights, everything else, I've explained this to everybody, nobody seems to care. I, I don't, it doesn't make any sense to me because you would want to live on a road accepted by the town. There's nothing I can do.
I wrote a letter as well, asking for response from the homeowners. Didn't receive any.
The term, the term of the original trustees shall continue until a lot owners have held their first annual meeting and have an election of trustees. Can you pull that up?
They won't respond. I'm the only one. I'm the only one doing anything, but at least I'm doing it. You know, I still own the retention basin, I still maintain it, that's the only thing that's the issue, really. You know, it's up to them to try and come together to get the town to accept the road, it only makes sense, and he's already tried. I mean, I, I don't understand it, it defies logic, but there's nothing I can do. My responsibilities are over. And the fact I came back and finished it, I didn't have to.
Charlie, you said that except for a light post or something, the, the work has been completed?
Yeah, this goes back, I'm guessing, maybe three years now. Top course of mix was put down, there was some changes to a sidewalk. I'm trying to remember if there were any trees planted in there, there were some other things that needed to be done.
Monuments.
If that's the file, whatever letter I wrote back then is probably there.
So, and that's for the benefit of the homeowners as well? Not, not only is he satisfying the requirement, the obligation to the town, but for the benefit of the homeowners, who seem to not be responding?
Yes, because all of those improvements were part of the development that was part of the approved plan that, that was granted to the applicant at that time. So obviously, it was with the understanding that all those things would be done before a final sign-off on the, on the approval. At some point in time, clearly, money was put in an account with the town so that Mr. Bechant or whoever had the lots at that time could get lot releases to build the houses. So that's, that's what took place. I, I can't give you the timelines, I wasn't involved in the process at that time. But typically, that's what happens, and the Homeowners Association really should have been established, recorded, so that when the first person got his lot, he got, in addition to his deed, he got a reference to the fact that there's, he's a member of the Homeowners Association in some percentage of the total ownership. And at the end of the build-out of everything, then the applicant goes away and all of the homeowners become 100% owners in that association. They then become the managers of that association, which includes the taking care of the drainage system. So somewhere along the line, deeds got sold, deeds got conveyed out with no reference to a Homeowners Association, and some people apparently are balking at that and don't want to be involved in it. So that's why I think legal counsel needs to advise you as to how to proceed.
There's two issues. One is, is this how we justify and withholding road construction surety for lack of a Homeowners Association?
That, that is a question that I would put to Town Council. It may be that if it wasn't among the listed items in the original security that was posted, you may not be able to retain it. But I would defer to Town Council, I don't have an answer for you there.
And the other issue is, can you, and this is for your protection, can you walk away from your rights and hand this off to them without having disclosure issues and legal issues on the other end? We don't want to hand you back your money so you can pay legal fees with it.
I don't care. I mean, it is what it is. It, it's not mine, I'm just trying to help out, and I've been maintaining the thing, the retention basin, so, I mean, it is what it is.
Does the deed for the property and the retention basin state that you need to participate as, as a member of the Homeowners Association?
Does it say I need to participate?
Or you as the owner of the property?
Doesn't say that, no, because I don't have, I don't have frontage, I only have an easement going out to my Cranberry Bog and the other land I own in the back, so I don't actually have frontage in the subdivision.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think you're absolutely right that this is council's call, but I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that this is road construction surety, that job has been completed. I think, if I was just, just having, you know, a reasonable conclusion saying, there's only two properties that had deeded responsibility here to the Homeowners Association, to default, those two property owners should just get a letter from the town and saying, to default, and you're not responsible, we are recognizing you as the, the trustees for the Homeowners Association. And that should move them off-center, and then those two carry the burden for the entire road, in my mind, and it's their job to get the others, the other four off-center at that point.
Well, I think it makes sense for everyone to come together and get the road officially accepted at town meeting. It just behooves everyone for them to do that, but...
You know, that's a separate, that's a separate issue.
And you wrote a letter to them, to that effect, and I don't know...
That's a separate issue, Mr. Bechant, that has nothing to do with...
But I'm just saying, common sense, but whatever.
Completing everything according to the approved plan, and there's nothing to say that the town has to accept the road, so it might be a nice thing or a nice gesture for them to request, but it's not a part of what's before the board right now.
And you own one of the lots?
Hmm?
You own one of the lots?
No, I don't own, no. Paul Florindo owns the last lot at the end. I own the retention basin and the rest of the land around there in the Cranberry Bog.
Does his deed read he has to participate?
No.
Why do you own the retention basin?
It's just because it comes with all the other land I still have. It's like leftover from the subdivision, it wasn't useful.
Why don't you transfer it to the, to the homeowners?
Because it'll be more of a mess. And I don't need more of a mess. I'm trying to lessen this, I'm trying to make it a little easier.
Let's see if we can get some answers so we can put this to bed. We will make another attempt to get council to...
Town council will be in tomorrow afternoon.
Give us something that he can support.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guy's going to run out of land pretty soon, or what?
The draft decision that I handed out was actually prepared by Attorney Rich Cirky.
Oh, now we've got to check every bit of it, geez.
There were a couple of changes that I made in the text, in the version you have, which was to add the title of the plan. We'll want the plan signed as well, so we know which one was the permit plan associated with the decision.
So along those lines, that might be a, a good time for me to jump in. Stacy Minahan with Beals &amp; Thomas. We did complete the soil testing that Charlie had requested at the last meeting, and we're still reviewing the information, but it does look like we'll be making some minor adjustments to the grading. It won't change the footprint of the array, and we'll submit the, you know, the updated plan prior to, I think we had discussed the expiration of the appeal period.
We'll want to identify the, the updated plan somehow in the decision.
I had edited one of the conditions, or you didn't see the edited, but I had added to one of the conditions that Mr. Cirky had drafted to reference. So condition number one, construction in substantial conformity with the approved plan revised through March 11th, with a subsequent revision addressing grading changes, yada, yada, to try and capture that as well.
Yeah, it's just that what we'll want to do is have a very specific date on the plans and have them, have it signed.
Yeah, they...
Maybe we, we can add a codicil or whatever to this, this decision, just to make sure that the, the correctly dated plans are part of the record.
Right. Yeah, the plans will have another line for the revision date, so it should be very clear on the final plan set that you receive what the final revision date is.
Do we leave it open pending the rest of the information, or we close with specific information required?
You closed.
Got a good memory, but it's short. Put that condition on there. We're gonna add some verbiage here regarding the updated plan.
With a subsequent revision addressing grading changes.
They're gonna address that?
Yeah, so I'll test it, that's right.
So we just need to scratch that and insert the plan date? Surprise your phone's not ringing.
Hello, ring.
There's nobody there, and the place was off. Must they pack all the guys inside? You wanna do this one, just print on another page with that?
Yeah, and so you just do the signature page, and we'll revise.
What does, what does, the removal of trees has been reduced, et cetera. It will be limited to tree trimming along access roads or removal of individual specimens to accommodate interconnection. What, what does that mean?
So if you recall, we're accessing Far to the South, just as Charlotte, just as Federal Road, excuse me, I'm twisted around right now. Far and the Market Road crosses the utility easement. The access is a pretty far run on existing bog roads up to the site. The site then has a medium voltage trench that runs back down to the utility corridor. As we interconnect the utility corridor, it's obviously above ground, so when we put our riser poles in, there may be a couple small trees saplings that need to be removed or some, maybe some overhanging branches or whatnot.
Is everyone still studying?
It's a long decision.
Yeah.
George, I have two questions on the decommissioning, which is items six through eight in your conditions. I believe it states that the conditioning, decommissioning proposal is on file in the planning office. Is that the same one that was submitted with the application? Because I had put some comments in my report about the value of some of the items that were in that as being not enough. So I'm just asking whether or not that got revised. And the second thing about that was that part of the decommissioning was they were going to use the recycling center for the disposal of materials, and I felt that that was not acceptable. So I'm not seeing any reference to it, and I wondered if they had changed it based on those remarks that I made.
We have not.
Can.
We can.
A recycling center?
No, the Wareham Recycling Center, what for Maple Swing Road.
Not very practical.
Not for something this size.
Yeah, I think we discussed that, that for some previous projects. That recycling center is mainly used just to calculate mileage as one of the many line items that go into our decommissioning estimate. I think we can, we can look back and see what we did on the previous three projects that were approved and kind of mimic that. And I believe the other comment was on seeding.
Yeah.
Good.
The cost, the loam and seed cost was only the area that was under the panels. I've calculated the square footage of the panels, and the square footage alone was the exact same number. Doesn't take into consideration any of the regrading or reseeding of the rest of the site. Once you pull out all of those panels and all of the posts and everything else, you're gonna be disturbing a lot of ground. And four inches of loam and seed is practically gonna be non-existent once you pull all those panels out and get rid of them. So it's almost the whole site needs to be loamed and seeded, not just under the panels. Just needs to be looked at again. I don't have a number in mind, but it clearly was not enough in the cost estimate. The numbers that were in the decommissioning proposal, the assumption is they're going to simply loam and seed where the panels were, but you can't pull those panels out with, without disturbing a lot more ground around them. So the number's gotta be kicked up some, and I don't know how much it is, to account for the disturbance of other ground. You, you simply can't lift those plus the posts out, pull them out with a, some sort of a vehicle, whether it's a backhoe or, you know, whatever equipment they might use without disturbing the area around it. And it just wasn't sufficient, in my view. And I think the mileage, the, the cost of the removal of some of these was based on trucking it down to the Wareham Recycling Center, which you can't use anyway. So you've got to adjust, I think, that, too.
How much contingency was in that, do you remember?
Requirements are that you had 25%, but if the base amount's not enough to begin with, the 25% doesn't really work.
It's not something we're married to. That number is relatively inconsequential to us upfront, but obviously very important to the town and to the long-term operation and decommissioning of that project. So we're happy to, Ken, if you want to modify that language in six, that basically doesn't state that it's presented, is approved, but basically we could approve it with an updated plan? Or, excuse me, yeah, an updated decommissioning plan and estimate, I'm fine with that. And I can work with Charlie, or work with Charlie through Stacy on getting something that makes sense.
Triple remember.
Last meeting, we're easy.
I just want to see the date ready for the Wareham Recycling. See what goes on.
Beep beep, we're here.
We have a bag of cans and 9,000 solar pads.
Thirty years from now, let's see.
Plus, plus all the chain link fence and everything.
Only gonna last 12 years, huh?
Yeah, that's right. We won't be here after that.
You only, that's right.
How we want to resolve that?
How much time is left to file a decision, Ken?
I don't know. I, I just looking at this remediation work they've done in the past, I think if you're taking those panels down, you would disturb a, and then a beginning path into the first line of panels, and then you can work from the center outward. So I, I can't imagine you move, would disturb, you know, more than 25% of the perimeter area.
You'll disturb every bit of ground in between the panels.
No, that, that I don't disagree with, but, you know, any footprint beyond the solar farm.
I would agree with that, so long as they don't cut into the slopes and, and pull everything out, but wherever the chain link fence is, there's bound to be some there. Maybe your 25% number is good. They've got an engineer that can look at that and give us a number, and I can take a look at it, but it'd be nice to have that number before the filing of the final decision with the town clerk.
How long will it take to do this?
Won't take me long to review it once I get the information.
Have you decommissioned any, any farms?
No. We've done a couple major O and M kind of repairs where, you know, a distress system gets basically rebuilt, but a lot of it is based on that kind of step-by-step assumption. We've built a lot, and generally it's the same amount of labor to pull it out as it is to put it in, so that's kind of where a lot of the assumptions come from. But Charlie's points is well-taken. I think there's no way we're gonna be walking around on tiptoes carefully pulling up each thing. It's gonna be big, rough machines going in there. I think the loam will still be there, but I think definitely reseeding almost the entire acreage is, is fine, just changing that calculation up from X acres that you feel like is low to make sure it meets the whole development area. I think we can do that.
Could you, could you just make the assumption that everything within the fence gets redone?
It's one way, one way of calculating, so put a number into the square, number of square yards for loam and seed. That would, that would be satisfactory.
Yeah, that would cover any disturbance.
And then you're gonna take that number and add 25% onto it anyway. Yeah. And then do something with the adjustment for the travel back and forth, because there was a number for each item to truck that stuff back and forth, but you can't use the mileage to the Wareham Recycling Center. You're not gonna take it there.
Where, where would be another recycling center?
I don't know off the top of my head. We can look, I think generally when we put together these, these estimates, we try to do the best we can, and we, you know, obviously we're not living in Wareham day by day, so we don't know all these facilities. So we go online, we find a facility, we identify it, we pick the miles, you know, we're just, we're trying to use as much logic as we can, but sometimes that breaks down. So we could spend a little bit more time, find a larger facility within southeast Mass, and I think just come up with something.
I think there's a, isn't there a Philly large recycling center in Brockton?
Little Bro.
Trojan? Well, Trojans is Brockton.
Science, Science and Little Bro is probably the closest. Quite sizable.
Could we move forward with this with the caveat that the, the final plan date has to be entered and the, and updated decommissioning number be approved?
I'd appreciate that. We can definitely provide both for the board in, in the coming week, week or so.
Yeah, maybe a little bit longer for the plan. So, just, so I'm clear as well, so moving forward and not filing with the town clerk until both the plan and the recycling, the decommissioning are updated? Or filing with the town clerk once the decommissioning is updated and noting to the fact?
I think it has to be filed with the town clerk. They, you do have, I believe, 65 days from the close of the hearing to file, to make a decision. What you can do is make the decision, and this could be a minor modification of the decision with the additional information that's provided.
You've got, you've got probably, what, at least 45 days from the last meeting, right? It was approved at the last meeting?
No.
It was closed at the last meeting.
It was closed in the last meeting? All right. But essentially the project was approved subject to these changes that we're, you're talking about. So wouldn't it be 60 days? How much time do you have to get that submitted to the town clerk? That's my question.
Well, from when the decision is made, it's 14 days. It's 65 days after the close of the hearing to make the decision.
Okay, so, so there's time now before you actually have to get it to the file with the town clerk, is all I'm saying. So if they get the information in within the 65 days, then you can file it, and you've got all the information that you need to include in the decision.
That presumes an approval tonight and then an update of the decision, and then it gets filed within the, the time period?
I defer to Ken on that as to how you do it. I assume you could approve it subject to the receipt of that information.
That's important to us. The date, having that March 25th approval date is, is of critical importance to us, and then filling in these two holes, we'd certainly move as quickly as we can.
Well, if we have a decision date, we have...
If you vote tonight, the decision date would be March 25th, as requested.
And all the information would have to be in in 14 days?
Yes.
And we can accommodate that on our end.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought the plan was gonna be an issue for you.
Not if we have 14 days. It shouldn't take that long. We should be reissuing it next week.
And I can move, I can move very quickly on the decommissioning, so we can have that well in hand in case there's a couple back and forths, more comments from Charlie.
Does that mean that we have to meet again to?
No.
Formalize? No. Okay.
So the motion suggested was... So the motion suggested was approve the plan pending the insertion of the correct plan date and the updating of the decommissioning estimate.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the plan based on the conditions of updating the plan date, as well as a adjustment to the decommissioning bond.
Tucker, any you? Any further discussion?
Sorry, Bob.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Vote and assignment of clerk.
One of the things that noted was that although you have a chairman and a vice chairman, you don't have a clerk?
Oh, that's correct. We didn't, we didn't update that after Michael's departure.
Oh, you phrased that. I know what he meant.
But you're sitting in the seat.
That's exactly what I was concerned about.
Entertain a motion to point Michael as our clerk. Second?
I always get the feeling I was just shanghaied.
If nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve. Is that agreeable to you, Mike?
Yes, sir, I will do my best.
So motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Do we have any committee appointments that we have open, that we need to fill? Do we ever supply anybody for capital planning? I know that sticks in my head, that they needed a...
I thought you were...
Did I get elected to that?
Well, we can reconsider all the positions if you want.
Well, I think we should list them and then, so we don't miss any.
Yeah, okay. I'll list them, and then people can decide which one they're feel responsible for. Right now? No, I don't have the list.
Ah, board training.
I'll turn this over to Emmanuel and Mike. They took the weekend course. And I think you guys enjoyed it, right?
It was, it was excellent.
Yeah, very, very informative.
However, what became very apparent to me is that, this is a full-time, the scope of the working here should be a paid position. What, all of you received tonight a copy of the material that Michael and I received, and I think it's better that you take it home, review it, and maybe we can discuss parts of it at the next meeting. It was very informative. And what, it was four, five hours of it? And so much information was bombarded at us that, you know, it, the next day or the two days later, you start to maybe realize what you were told. So it was, all in all, very helpful. I'd love to do it every year, as long as I'm on the board. And am I speaking for you, too, I guess?
Yeah, I think you touched on all of it. It was, it showed, I think it showed that as, as well as we try to do this job, there's a lot more that we could be doing more efficiently. One of the things I took away from it was...
Mike, you're wrong. I'd like to hear your comments.
How about that? One of the things that I took away from it, one of the instructors made, made a point of showing that when we're dealing with the public and listening to comment and whatnot, that we might be a little bit laxed in the way we approach them and the way the, the people sitting in front of us kind of take the meeting over on us and run away from us. And the woman that was teaching that particular course, she was an attorney, and one of the things that I picked up on was she said, "You have a gavel."
We used to have one.
If you have it, use it. If you don't have it, get it. And the reason I think that that struck a chord was, at the last meeting, when we were talking about boats in the yard, and the gentleman that kind of droned on and on and on and on and on, and chewed up a bunch of our time with the same message, just regurgitated several times over. I think we can be a much more effective board if we can keep the meetings on task. I think they get away from us a little bit.
Yeah, I know, I know that's happened quite a bit, and a lot of that's because I find that things go a little smoother if you let people get things off their chest and then put it behind you. But point well taken.
Well, it just seems like there's some evenings where we...
We do wander.
...four hours and really don't accomplish a whole lot. I'd rather see either more accomplished in three or four hours, or the same amount accomplished in two hours.
The copies that you received have my hand, my notes on them, but I have one question that I asked it there, and I still did not understand the answer. Both this, another document I have, the statutes, says Chapter 48 is the zoning act, not the zoning enabling act. So I put my hand up and I asked, and the answer I got was, "Well, the latter does not apply." So why is it in here? And have I misunderstood?
The reason is because almost every other state has a zoning enabling act that enables the towns to do zoning. Whereas in this home rural state of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's a zoning act. It's a, it's a legal distinction that doesn't really make a difference to us on the local level when we're doing the zoning. But it has importance to, to constitutional lawyers, I guess, and then...
What did you say? Would you explain, please?
So the local authority is granted somewhere else, not in 48? Is that what you said?
That's right.
In the zoning enabling act.
The zoning enabling act enables towns to do zoning. We have a zoning act, and we have elsewhere, we have police powers that allow the towns to, to create zoning for their communities.
Okay, I'll read the...
Still not yet, huh?
No. I think it's badly written. It doesn't, if it doesn't apply to us, why do they say it?
Because anybody coming from another state would be saying, "Where's your, where's your enabling act?"
Some people use it that way. I've heard it in different places, and they may not be knowing that there is a distinction. But when all is said and done, it's a zoning act under Chapter 48, which gives you the authority to actually establish your rules and regulations and establish your zoning districts and all that stuff. So you're right. We don't, we don't really need it.
So the statute 40, statute, the statute allows us to enable our zoning, right? Okay, thank you.
I ask for a little training here, based on tonight. This is just my internal feeling on the development in West Wareham there. If, if, what is our ability to force road corrections and some of that burden be carried by these developers? I'm very fearful that, once this one's filled, we've lost any leverage we have in getting a correction to that roadway. So how much can we push onto a developer to look at infrastructure change?
One thing you could do is to, through the 53G account that pays for Charlie's time, also hire a specialist, transportation specialist, who can review what Vanessa's been doing and take a broader look at what's going on in that area of town, and make recommendations as to mitigation that might be appropriate.
I personally feel, you know, that there's a conflict of interest in that the, this roadway review is being done by the same firm for all property owners on that roadway. There's, there's really...
Have you anything, any specific changes that you can identify to give them some direction?
Well, I just, I just think that, you know, they're thinking, you know, they're looking at the, this is a private assessment that's being done based on how those businesses pour out onto Toby Road. Gentlemen, there's no way six lanes that funnel into two lanes in a 400-foot distance can be right. There's just no way. I just spent the last five days down in Florida. The amount of thinking that goes into roadway systems and movement, and we're talking about a major conversion of every anchor store on planet Earth, all in one little, in one light is all we've added here, all of this. That doesn't make any sense to me. And again, I'm not an expert in this area. I can only tell you as a citizen moving down that road, that we, we sign off on this next one, and we find out that we need to widen this road, and we need to put two lanes in there, and we need to put signals in there. That burden falls on us as the taxpayers. We're not going back to the dentist and asking for more money at that point. It's done and done. And I think that we need a planner. We should use some of this money to say, "Look, let's do some what-ifs here," because they're, they're not even thinking about who hasn't built yet. I'm really surprised tonight that MaxiGas went as quick as it did. That decision was executed, develop that property. The next one is the Wonder Bread, the next one after that is the Wareham Pharmacy. And I think that everything is pouring into that correction of the road down there, and we need to hold people accountable for this. They're the major beneficiaries of this business, it's not us.
Well, my suggestion there, which I've made in the past, is those sites developed to the full layout of Route 28. If that means there's room for an extra lane there, then try to get that when Walmart went in and they, we got, "Oh, that's not necessary." So now you get pinched down to tow road.
A private consultant representing the developer is not going to push on behalf of the Wareham residents.
But we had, we had peer review with Walmart, we had peer review with Wareham Crossing.
We could do it with this one as well.
Yeah. So I just, you know, hopefully I didn't come across too abrasive. I just feel that we're bleeding leverage by the second year, every time that we push this stuff along, and that we just need to slow the process down, because we don't know what's going in the five unoccupied spaces over into all these conflicts in Wareham Marketplace. We don't know what these two slabs are going to produce. If it produces an Olive Garden, anybody go to the 99 and see how much traffic goes through there?
A lot.
The bar and the restaurant. When you get a restaurant that really pays attention to turning over tables, there's a huge amount of traffic.
Well, I had notes on Charlie's review, and when it touched base on the amount of parking spaces that they had calculated, that, that was my note, was restaurant plan.
Yeah.
Because I think you're right. I think if that larger slab becomes a restaurant, and he alluded to 250 tables, and they turn it three times a day, which I think is about standard.
I think 250 seats is what he...
Well, 250 seats, yeah. So you figure a minimum of two people to a, to a dinner, so 125 times three times a day, there's, there's another 350 vehicle trips in and out of that. That entrance into Walmart that's also used as the exit on the Toby Road, that's the part that scares me about all of it. Because if you're coming out of there and you're trying to take a left to get out on the 28, you're taking your life in the hands almost right now, much less when the Wendy's goes in and all the other outposts get filled with tenants.
Right. And the curb cut and the MaxiGas property, I was serious about that, is that that thing should pour out onto tow road. That, we have the same circumstance as the mobile that was just added on to there at the Home Depot intersection. These people do the stupidest things pulling into Chili's and pulling out of that mobile station there, and it's because we allow it to happen based on the Cranberry Highway. You know, the, the other part of this concern is, I can't, you know, I wasn't a participant in the development of these other properties, but I can tell you that, you know, Wareham Crossing is a concealed retail center. You turn in this entrance road, it's concealed. It's not destructive as you're driving down the Cranberry Highway. Wareham Marketplace, I say, I would call it a partially concealed or exposed. My feeling is that that piece of property should be concealed to the middle, like you're saying. Pull those out, because this makes no sense to me. We're looking at back of buildings in the all these parking lot, and we're going to be looking at front of the buildings just opposite then? I would, I would, if we knew it was going to turn out this way in a planned community, we would have told one or the other to make a match. Because now, now we're flip-flopping this thing, where there's no consistency across here. The setback on, you know, whatever, whatever Bob Perry was here preaching tonight for MaxiGas, what is going to be the setback on that building? Is it going to be 75 foot off the curb? And then what, is that consistent with the Wonder Bread place? Is that consistent with...
The old pharmacy?
The old pharmacy, right? Because, and I think it needs to be back that far, because if you need to, we're going to have to expand that part of the Cranberry Highway.
The thing is, though, if you look at the Wonder Bread property and the pharmacy property, it's not that deep. That's why that property's still sitting there.
No, that's not why it's still sitting there.
Don't forget that anything that fronts on Cranberry Highway gets, gets a review by the state, and unfortunately, the towns don't have an awful lot to say in what they approve.
So I wouldn't, to me, it would make sense for us to talk to a state representative and say, "Let's lay out the next five properties here, because they're going to go bang, bang, bang. Tell us what we're allowed to do within the state parameters, how far you're going to expand this road. If all of this was occupied, what would it look like? It wouldn't look like a single lane right now. It's, you know, there's a wide breakdown lane there that can be expanded, but it can't. Again, the big consideration here is what happens with the telephone poles. It's just, somebody has to have some, you know, a planning that lays out a quarter of a mile down that highway, and tell us what it's going to have to do, so that we can come back and say, "As a condition of the development of this property, this will have to be expanded at some point, and there will be a cost associated with you as a developer."
There's two things I think you can look at, Mark. For example, in Mashpee, are you familiar with the rotary at Route 151 and 28? They set their zoning up so that along Route 28, you cannot have more than one driveway in and out of a particular property along 28, unless you've got a substantial distance to the next one or the next property. They set their zoning up so that the spacing between driveways is pretty well set and established, and that controls the zoning in how you lay out the internal circulation of your lots. It's still up to the state to apply the curb cut permit, but still the zoning takes place there. The second thing is that you can do things with mitigation fees to some extent, and Ken, you're probably a lot more familiar with than I am, down there, if they have a, if they have a project of what they consider regional impact, there's a certain amount of money that a development will have to pony up at the beginning, and it goes to the Cape Cod Commission, and they put it in a fund from Mashpee. Then when there's a certain project that comes up that really needs some improvements to roads and so forth, the money's there that they can use. So there are mechanisms for doing it. I don't think that's in place here, but it probably could be with a little bit of work at it.
We have to, we have to take it. I don't know how this stuff is getting done in these other towns, but the planning that's being done in Plymouth, that Mashpee Commons there is brilliant. It's just tucked away...
That's been in the process since 1955, probably.
Okay.
So it's been there for a long time. And right now, they're actually doing a study... So it's been there for a long time and right now they're actually doing a study as to how they will improve that rotary and the amount of traffic that Cranberry Highway, not Cranberry Highway, Route 28 and Route 151 get. Because in the summertime, it's a logjam in that whole area. So they're looking at that type of thing, but it's in conjunction with the state because it is a state highway. But to your point, remember that a lot of those applications are going to be looking for frontage on Cranberry Highway that the state controls. So...
Well, you know, it...
Makes it hard.
Well, it's almost backwards in the way that it gets presented to us and then they turn around and go to the state where they're holding us to generic state conditions here. I would be more comfortable if they said, "This plan has been reviewed by the state, you know, prior to getting to you all. This is the concessions they're willing to make with the improvements to the Cranberry Highway for this project." Otherwise, it's, we're looking at it, signing off on it, and then we're held victim to whatever the state decides.
No, as you heard tonight, the state doesn't look at it outside of the MIPA filing, which is done on this property. They don't look at it until we approve a plan for them to review.
Okay. So...
You know, and we were always told they'll only allow one 24-foot curb cut per entity and the next thing you know, somebody else has got two, you know?
Yeah.
So we're told one thing and something else gets enacted.
Yeah. I just have a hard time believing someone that's an expert in traffic control wouldn't make a suggestion of, "Look, a single lane down Toby Road is not going to work anymore. It needs to be a double lane further on down, maybe to the midpoint, somewhere around Cape Cod Trucking, the post office down there. Widen that up to a double lane and at some point, we're going to put a median strip in there so that people can't haphazardly, they have to be a little more choosy in how they enter in." You know, if you have an arrow on a median strip, on a concrete median strip, it tells you exactly where to turn. You, it helps direct that traffic through. And that's what I was saying tonight. I said, "Are you kidding me? There's not one improvement suggestion that comes here? It seems like every developer comes here and says, 'This is how I want to do it.'" And the traffic study supports it.
I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that every traffic report that I've ever seen focuses on intersections and it very rarely focuses on improvements along the roadways that connect those intersections. And that's where the mitigation issue comes in and how you can set up funding for doing those kinds of improvements you're talking about. And that's why I asked the question about the intersection there where the frequency of accident seems to be higher than normal. If that's the case, why aren't you looking at that in particular? Because it doesn't matter what happens down at the mall entrance down there in 28 so much. It doesn't matter so much what happens at the interchange of 195, but it does impact that four-way intersection now, which is tight to the signalized intersection. And part of the problem you've got is that putting another set of signals right there does bad things for keeping the traffic flowing and moving through that area. Yeah. So I don't know how much we can talk about this with respect of what we're saying over that project though, Ken. I'm a little nervous about that myself. I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't want to make it specific about a project. I just, it's not about the developer here. It's just about the general development. We have the telltale of East Wareham. We know what's working, what hasn't.
There's a perfect example. You've got East Wareham where you've got 50 feet of pavement and a 90-foot right-of-way, just roughly. All the businesses have encroached into that straight state right-of-way. So now you have an issue where everything's getting pushed back and you have a major construction, you have takings, it's going to be a nightmare.
Yeah.
That's why, my opinion is, as each property along the road develops, they develop to the state layout.
Yeah.
Don't encroach or even expand state highway if it...
So can we ask them on a...
If you're the only one that does it, you've got a place for a tractor-trailer truck to pull over. If everybody does it, we've got another lane.
So from the plans we looked at tonight, was it clear on the plans where the state layout is?
Yes. Yes, it was not. As well as the underlying, what's existing was there.
I want to go back to your question, Mark, which was going through my head when we were looking at the plans, again, not specifically for this project, but how much authority do we have to direct a developer? The, I have to use tonight's example as an example, but Charlie's point about relocating the buildings makes sense in a planning sense and visual as well as, I really find that entrance with the 180-degree, it just doesn't make sense. To what point can we say, "No, you're going to do it this way"? To what degree, to what degree do we have... You know, by the way, excuse me, I was delighted when, what's the 40B project?
Woodland Cove.
Woodland Cove. When I suggested a different site plan, I was pleased that they accepted it. I hope they're still using it, right? I mean, and so, but does that mean we have to sit and redesign for the developers? I mean, it's, you know, I spent four days on that, just for the record, on that site plan. You can't do this wherever you project.
No. And it's not our job to redesign it, but I think it is incumbent upon us to give them direction. Give them reasonable expectations of what you want.
Can reinforce it.
And not ambush them toward the end of the project and say, "You want this, you want that." Try to keep them informed all the way through the project, what direction you want them to go in, so there's...
But a point in K, tonight, we got the answer that, "Well, that's what the standard design is for these tenants, that they have to..."
If you saw the rendition from the Walmart side, Aspen does a pretty good job of identifying their product from three sides on that one. You know, they have a signage all the way around.
I found those to be a little bit...
Overdone?
Overdone. Way overdone. Yeah. Because you're looking at it from this view. When you're sitting in a car, you're looking at it from this view.
But they do have, if you look at this signage, it's not a one-sided building.
No, that's what I was saying. They've got sign, they've got Aspen Dental on three sides of the building, which is just a rendering of a generic building. So if they're after something that tells them this is Aspen Dental, I have no problem with putting it on the Cranberry Highway side. But the access to the project is the opposite side. That's all I was saying. But I hear what Emmanuel's saying too. I think that if it's the board consensus, I think you need to speak out and don't assume that they're agreeing with what one individual says and that they're going to take and run with it. Because if enough of the board echoes the same sentiment and says, "Yeah, this is really something we want you to look at," they'll go back and they'll take a look at it. Right now, I don't think that that has been transmitted. But you have a lot of say. Yeah. You're the planning board, not just a yes, okay board.
So it seems to me that we should have been more forceful tonight.
I don't think more forceful. I think it's the consensus to show that if somebody comes up with an idea, that the rest of you, if you agree, say so. Because then it's the majority decision of the board, not just an individual.
It'll move the applicant...
...for direction before they come back to us again.
It'll move the applicant in that direction, provided they get the sense that the board is thinking in a particular direction and that they're not going to get to third base without making some substantial changes. But if only one suggests it and nobody else backs them up, that's sort of an indicator to an applicant that, "Well, I guess it isn't that important, so we won't bother with it." And then when it comes up later, that's when it becomes an issue.
Okay, guys.
I think they listened to us on the lights. We were in unison on those...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That worked. And I purposely drove in there, it was one dark night, I was coming back from Mashpee, and I says, "Son of a gun, the lights are on. Let me swing around and see where they are." And they did, they did the job because it was exactly the way that they said.
I did, I mentioned to Ken, I went by Master Millwork one evening and the place was lit up like Fenway Park, so I suggested he talk to the building department.
They've never...
They weren't working, they were closed.
They've never gotten a sign off, you know, on that, Master Millworks. There's never been a final inspection or anything on that project.
You know that 14-acre piece in between that and the lot that was in front of us tonight? Is there, there's not a solar farm there now, is there?
No. It's just woods.
Already an approved solar farm?
No. Just woods. I think you're going to have more buildings coming in there.
I signed it already.
Just a guess on my part.
That exact lot, actually. That's why you don't know. I think it's a good, the only, I didn't make it there, but where they were showing the placement of the building, I don't think it's consistent with the depth the rest of the buildings are. The rest of them seem to be back about 300 feet.
Beetons put theirs back on purpose. They wanted to be back off the road. And it gave them...
Yes.
As a matter of fact, that's another one that's not got a final sign on.
If you want to sign it and get it out of the way.
Can I just, one thing before we...
You harass me so I can file?
One thing that stuck out for Michael and me at the planning board, I can't remember their, the Citizens Planner Collaborative, which I hadn't understood before, that the planning board, it is the responsibility of the planning board to develop the master plan.
What, to guide to the master plan?
To develop it. Gives us more...
It takes, I believe, Emmanuel, it takes sort of the form of the master plan that's been produced, which hasn't been approved yet. But I think in addition to that, it becomes a much more binding document in terms of how things get laid out. I'd have to take a look at it myself to know that for a fact, but it seems to me from things I heard in the past that if the, if a planning board defines one, it's actually, it's talking about planning the way that Mark was talking about planning and happens in Florida where they have block upon block that's nothing but palm trees right now, but they've got it laid out for so much density of shopping here, so much residential here and so forth. And you've got to comply with that. Whereas the master plan that we're talking about is a little bit different taste to it.
It's a policy document.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
It is a, not a regulatory, but a policy document.
Exactly.
Well, plus you talked about, most of that is new zoning compared to what we're dealing with.
It is, and I, it was put in the original subdivision control law probably for that purpose. I don't know of any town around that has actually done that. It's been in there. I can remember talking about it with my father way back in, I think, 1960s or 1970s. And he said to me, "Do you realize, if you're saying the planning board ought to do this, do you realize what you're asking them to do?" That's essentially to lay out the road system and all the connecting, everything else in the town and from once it gets done, that's what you stick with. So it's a little, little different thing than the master plan, which is simply sort of a policy thing that's helping you guide sections of the town as to where you want to see it develop like that.
Well, the other thing was, you know, when they were trying to pull off the Westfield debacle, it was conflicted with the master plan, so they just changed the master plan. So, you know, that kind of leaves a bad taste.
Yeah.
All our articles got pushed at town meeting?
Yeah, two, there are two articles before town meeting. Article, I believe, on town meeting warrant, it's Article 11 and Article 12. Article 11 is the...
Emmanuel, thank you.
And Article 12 is the temporary side of our... That's in Article 11.
What about the solar?
Solar did not get carried through to the...
They thought it would conflict with our green community.
No, I think we should make it for the next town meeting then, for the fall town meeting, guys.
Bring it back again.
Because we don't know what the conflict would be. What, I mean, if there's a, what's the penalty?
You know, if we put out a good effort to try and protect our residential areas and...
We'll get that in.
We should put, we should have left that in.
We didn't leave, we didn't take it out. Well, the selectman did not put it on the warrant, as far as I know.
Do you want to take a motion to adjourn?
I would.
I'm sorry? Well, exactly. We should find out.
I have a motion on the floor. Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at, what, 9:47?